This is to 4C. That's a utility expenditure for Griffin Drive Lift Station.
Kenny Hall, Utility Manager. This is the approved expenditure of $114,000 for the complete rehabilitation of the District's Griffin Drive Lift Station. This station was put online in 1988 and has not had any major modifications to it or rehab. This is going to be a major operation. We are going to have to shut the collections system down completely after midnight. We're going to pump it down and then shut it down, shut off all the valves, let them cut the force mains out and install the plug valves. Once that's done and we can isolate that station, we'll go back around, turn everything back on, get everything going again. We're anticipating about six hours is for the contractors. That's their estimate. It could be, we did a preliminary dig, went down, looked at the plug valves, they're frozen, they're not working. So it's going to be a major operation. So this is a...
And I see this is in the budget.
This is a capital, 2018 capital improvement.
So you're just looking for approval on this?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I ask a question first? Can we have a motion in a second and then discussion?
Second.
Okay, my, a motion in a second. Mr. Guy made the motion, Mr. Tinkle seconded. Go ahead, Mrs. Flair.
You said it was $114,000. Is it under 114 or 113?
It could be, we don't know. We are not sure what this is exactly going to, the total cost of this is going to be. We do not know. This is for the full budgeted amount of... We say we could get into the station and we're anticipating the flooring of the station is completely rotted out. It's going to have to be completely redone. That's kind of a hidden cost. We don't know until we actually can isolate the station and get in there and see.
So it could be more than 113?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
It could be.
Kenny, do we have plans for this work? To answer her question. Do we have plans for this work?
Plans?
Something, description of, I'm assuming we've got bids or a bid?
Yes, three bids.
We got plans to show what we want done to where they can't come back and say, well, I didn't know about that?
No, no, we went over all this.
Just defined, defined scope of work.
On the estimates, they defined everything, the full scope of... There again, this station has been online since 1988. We just don't know exactly what, when we get down there and they get down there and find out what it could be, we just don't know.
Did you have the plans from upstairs? The 7-11 state, you're talking about 7-11 stations?
Yes.
We have the plans from upstairs?
Yes.
Okay.
So you only want to approve 113? Or do we need to approve more than that?
If we get over that, we would have to come back for something like that.
All right, that was my question.
Not to exceed 113.
Yes.
Kenny, I'm looking at the approved fiscal year 18 enterprise fund budget.
Yes, sir.
And there is a line here that says wastewater pump station replacement, two per year, $142,000.
Yes.
What I'm hearing you say is that one is going to cost 113...
That was originally budgeted. We are anticipating being able to do two with the 7-11 station and the condition it is and the unknowns, we just, it's going to happen. That's all going to go to that station.
Bill, mine says 125. Where do you see 114? Okay, I'm looking at this new one.
That's 2019, Mr. Tinkle.
The approved budget for fiscal '18, are we still...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And I'm looking at, also I'm looking at your, this is actually for $61,413 and $35,000. So that comes to 96,413. That's the initial expenditure that you're asking us to approve tonight, not the 113. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, that's why he did say 114.
114,000.
So that's why I wanted to know what he was asking for.
We just don't know. We were anticipating being able to do two this year and we put this out to bid in April and we're just now getting the contractors to come in and to be able to do the actual work. There's several hidden things that we're just not exactly sure of.
I'm trying to dig out of my memory the number of master lift stations we have around tonight.
Twelve.
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 Twelve major stations.
Community stations, yes.
What do we have in the fiscal '19 budget for this?
125, I believe, for next year.
Yeah.
So that'll get another one.
He got the 125.
You're not going to get two done for 125, are you?
If it's a standard lift station of rehab, yes, that should cover two stations. But this is not a standard, this is not, there's just, with these plug valves and that well, we just are not sure of that condition of that well. Until we can get it offline, pump it completely down, empty it out, and then go down into that well and see what is going on. And since it was, it's 30 years, we don't, it's not...
Is this a time and materials contract?
Yes, it is included in that, yes.
It's not a lump sum bid.
If they can do it for less, 100 feet less?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, any other questions? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I know that's going to be fun for you, Kenny. That brings us to 4D, request to cancel contract with land architects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Mr. Prezy was very congenial and very nice and understood and left the door open to work together at another time.
Okay, good. 4E, request for irrigation well evaluation.
I have lots of questions. Okay, and because I write on my book, okay, and they're for the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Can these wells be deeded to the club so that they would be responsible or do we have to do this inspection first?
The board can make a determination that the pumps, the wells, the machinery, the line are no longer needed or not in the best interest of the district to retain or surplus. And if they have a value of $5,000 or yes, yes, the bill of sale can be utilized to convey them to the club. The district could also enter into a lease agreement with the club to lease these facilities. And those are certain, there's a procedure in the statutes for the disposal, if redeemed to be, and the process is actually called, appear with me. If it serves, if it's obsolete or continued use of which is uneconomical or efficient or it serves no useful purpose, it may be disposed of. And again, depending upon the value, it may be, under $5,000, it may be disposed to just the one party, yes.
But a problem on that is that none of that has been proven to be true.
Again, none of that has been proven to be true.
The issue is that they are in the condition they're in is because we failed to follow Chapter 19007 and maintain these facilities. That's the requirements are, it's an asset of this district whether you like it or not. It should have been maintained. This didn't happen on Chris's watch. This didn't happen on the last guy's watch. This happened about 10, 12 years ago. And the issue is they should have been maintained all this time. My thing is that I would absolutely vote no against anything that has to do with declaring that these are not valuable. They're very valuable. They supplement the water supply for that irrigation system. It's what they were put in for. So they're valuable. I would much rather see the $5,000 spent to go out and find out so that we know once and for all and to determine for a valuation what the value of these things are, what are they worth? Are they worthless? I'm not of the opinion that they're worthless. I think they're salvageable and fixable, but we don't have that information and the only way we're going to get it is to spend the five or 5,500, whatever the number was that Chris has negotiated with his vendor. And I think that's the next proper step.
And the alternative, if it's determined that there is a value of greater than $5,000 but still determined it's obsolete or a continued use of which is uneconomical or inefficient, the board, we could then take solicit bids for the disposal of the property.
Should I have another question for the attorney? Go ahead.
All right, I have asked you this question before in other cases. Mr. Tinkle from Gateway Greens to vote on this, I don't know if there's a conflict of interest. He did state it would change his evaluation of his property. So my concern was, can he vote on it because it's a conflict of interest? And I have asked you that about other Stony Brook questions before.
Yeah, once again, and I don't like to shoot from the hip on these things, but in my opinion, it does not pose a conflict of interest under these Florida statutes because it's remote and speculative as to whether or not it endures to a special private benefit or gain. And in my opinion, it is not a conflict of interest under Chapter 112.
Yes, Mr. Guy.
Mr. Tinkle, you may not have a conflict of interest, but you've got an interest. That's quite clear. And I'm, I would be tending to agree with you that we don't know whether these things are valuable, invaluable, or worthless. Why would the new golf course not be the one to provide the service that's being considered here?
Because they don't belong to the golf course. They belong to the district, they've been under the district for all these years. Again, it's an asset of the district. I can't say it again. The fact is, they weren't maintained and it was a mistake.
I'd be happy to let them see if they're anything.
Well, I think that we have a duty of finding out what the issue is, especially if we're going to sell them or quit, claim deed them or bid them out to know what the value of the asset is that we're giving away.
That's fine.
So that's why I say, I would say go, that's not, I don't believe that to be their duty or responsibility. That's our job. That's our job.
Tony, as far as determining the value of these, do we have any other choice to determine the value of these other than spending $1,000 per well to...
We have the original bid, Margaret.
I'm asking Tony, please.
Yeah, I guess from the standpoint of value, from the standpoint of permit compliance, we have an obligation under the permit. And the permit was attached to my memo at the last board meeting. And the permit has some limiting conditions and special conditions with regards to the wells. And it provides that, bear with me if I may, that if at any time there's an indication that the well casing, valves, or controls leak or have become inoperative, repairs or replacement share we made to restore the systems to an operating condition and failure to make repairs is cause for filling and abandoning. So we need to find out what the condition is to determine whether to fill them and abandon them.
So even to fill them and abandon them or to declare them surplus, we still have to do an inspection?
I would say yes. And again, from the standpoint of determination, the value is not of the value by virtue of providing water. The value is, what's the value of the pumps, machinery, pipes that have been in the ground for what, 20 somewhat, more than 20 somewhat, you're 30 years.
37 years.
And that's where the value is. The value isn't what's the value to the golf course. The value is, until you have a depreciated capital asset of 30 years, I'm not sure what that value would be right off the bat.
$1,298.
Yeah, coupled with whatever condition they're in, so...
That sounds like less than $5,000.
To dispose of it to one party, yes, yeah. My gut would tell me that, but I'm not...
Mrs. Flair? Sorry? I thought you had a comment.
I do. I'm just sorry, you know, to ask another question. So that if we inspect them and find out, then can we deed them to the golf course?
Well, it's not a deed, it's a bill of sale.
Bill of sale?
I would say. And then there has to be a transfer of the permit also because the district is the current holder of the permit for those wells. And again, if it's determined that meets the criteria of inefficient, obsolete, et cetera, and if it has a value of less than $5,000, we can pick and choose whoever we want to give it to. If it's more than $5,000, then it'd be a public auction, but I can't imagine who would want to bid on it other than the golf course and probably get less than $5,000.
Thank you.
I think we still have an obligation to assess the things that we own, whether we like it or not. So I mean, if we spend this 5K to do an assessment, it's the first step in whatever the next step is, in whatever direction we go in. I mean, I think this is something we have to do and whether it sits on the Gateway Greens side or if it's sat somewhere else, I mean, I think we're obligated to at least have an understanding of what we own and what condition it's in so we can go to step two, which is determine what we're going to do with it, if any then.
Yeah, and the district could lease it to the golf club without having to go through any analysis of value.
I don't like it, but...
Well, and this is...
It's hard to lease without knowing what the problem is.
In reading this, this is only to pull one pump from one well. This isn't to actually inspect all five wells.
Inspect all five, but pull one.
It's going to inspect all five but only pulling one pump and motor because they're assuming that the condition of representative ones, since they were all put in the same, is going to be about the same.
And the one we want to pull is the one that had the greatest capacity at the time because four of those wells were kind of, were real good. The one was not bad, it was running in excess of 300 gallon a minute. That would be the one we'd want to pull and check.
And regardless, when you have the permit, and I had discussions with the Southland permitting staff, is they're getting curious about that permit because it hasn't been used in so long and typically after a five or 10-year period, they'll cancel those quantities themselves and you will be required to abandon those wells properly or pump them full of concrete, which would probably be several thousand dollars per well. And then you have all the piping above ground that you have to cut out and remove. So it's, either way, it's going to be a considerable cost. And we have head residents talk to us out there and say, when are you going to get rid of those wells? And we said, well, we are. And they said, well, they haven't been used, we know, in 10 or 15 years, so get rid of them. And they were actually going to call the water management district and complain that they had not been used.
And the reason they have been used is because we haven't maintained them. They were supposed to have been used because they were supposed to be on an automatic control valve that anytime the water level went below, it came on. And that never happened. And Terry indicated it didn't happen from the day they built them.
This sounds like a 10-inch fire hydrant line.
Close to it. It's only dirty water instead of clean water.
That's awesome.
So I'll make the motion to approve this item.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Banks and a second by Mr. Tinkle. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye, no, if that is no, no.
That's a no.
Only one of those names counts.
Yeah.
Yes, the four to four. Four to four.
All right, this is going to move us on to 5A. Fifth order of business. This looks like A, B, and C are all kind of together here. Audit committee selection?
Sure.
Sure, okay.
The last meeting, you basically, you accepted your 2017 audit and that was the last year for Burger, Tunes, and Games in terms of your commitment to them. So we have included in your agenda package all the material you'll need to kickstart the RFP process to select your audit firm, which will be for fiscal year 2018. We usually try and do about at least a three-year, but that really is up to the board to decide how many years. Three's kind of been the standard. But what we have included in here is you basically start with selecting an audit committee, which most of times is the board, and then establishing the RFP ad as well as the criteria by which you're going to select the actual auditor. And this is kind of some of the boilplate information for you to use. We can make changes to it however you like and basically we want to kickstart the process as you get close to the end of the year, which will be able to have your auditors selected and be able to get started once the year is basically over.
Mr. Banks asked me first, so I'm going to let him.
Do we have to bid this out?
No.
No, well, no, the process is, you have to engage in a competitive solicitation process, not bidding. But you do have to engage in this competitive solicitation process, yes.
But you can't use price.
That's, you can, I'm not sure, let me double check the statute.
No, you can just put price as one of the criteria.
And incentives and disincentives for late deliveries, you can put that in there also.
And the reason I bring it up is because I felt the company that we had been using, I thought did a very good job as long as their pricing is competitive. I would just hate to go through a whole RFP and a whole arduous process when, what are we talking about from a cost perspective?
What is this, 25 a year?
Yeah, I mean, it's fairly minimal. What are we going to save, a potential couple of K here or there? And this company would have historical, you know, knowledge that I think would add additional value. So I mean, if we have to, I would just grant them renewal if they would accept it.
The difficulty is when we did the last one, indicated X number of years for renewal. And then you can't go past that timeframe without going back through the audit process.
The way they set it up is if you have a set contract for three years with no renewal clauses in there, then you have to kickstart the process. And again, it really is, you know, from my experience, it's kind of dependent upon the district. Some of them will do a three-year and need that renewal clause in there for the future. Others have said, no, we can't do that. It's got to be three years and then you've got to do another.
If the word gets out that's anyone who's listening and here's what Doug said and I agree with what he said, how many people are going to show up to bid when they know that they're in second place to begin with?
Well, I'm just wondering, is there, is there an expedited or quick way to go through this? If we're satisfied with the results, the dollar amounts are within, I think, an acceptable threshold. I just don't want to do additional work if we don't need, staff's got other important things to do. Is there, is there a way to expedite this? And this is, that's if the remaining board members are, you know, in parallel with my thinking here.
Mr. Guy, you had a comment you wanted to make or a question?
I do, thank you, Madam Chairman. I will, I'm looking at the evaluation and ranking form on page 72. I will submit that no one at this table or in this room has the ability to rank professional CPAs. Once you get a certified public accounting certificate and maintain your annual CEUs, you are certified and unless the AICPA or SEC finds some substandard work on your part, every one of them, every one of the firms has to be, in my judgment, has to be considered equal. Therefore, I would think that what we ought to do, if we're going to go ahead with this, is we ought to change the first column to ask whether or not the respondent has had any admonitions from the AICPA or the SEC. And if they don't, then I think they're all equal. The district experience and knowledge, i.e. ones who have just finished with it, is an excellent way to judge. And staff depth and ability to perform is also a little difficult, but certainly the number of folks that they have on their payroll that work on organizations similar to RCD is, CDV is important. And of course, the fee is important. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Mrs. Flair?
Thank you very much. I like to go out for bid because I think sometimes people, if they know they're going to be just renewed or something, they can be very complacent and it gives us an opportunity to look at others and see and be able to compare of what we have to what could be. That's my opinion.
Any other comments? Okay, and what exactly are you asking for the board to do with this?
First thing would be to establish, if you're going to proceed, first thing would be to appoint your committee members. You have to establish an audit committee. And again, usually it's the board or, you know, it can be other folks. Once you've done that, then item B would be establish the criteria that was just mentioned. And then item C would be to proceed with the advertising of the RFP process, the RFP itself.
And I know previously the committee has been the board members and I think...
That's correct.
That we're the ones that see the audit, we're the ones that work with the committee. My opinion is that that's just fine to go ahead and leave it as the board.
And it sounds like, does the board want to have, one of the factors for purposes of evaluating the proposal is the compensation?
Yes.
Then we would need to put that in there also, I think, Stephen.
It's in here.
It's in there.
It's compensation, yeah.
In the evaluation form.
Second to last column, page 72.
And I agree with, I personally agree with what Mr. Guy said as far as ranking, that that would make sense to ask those questions of them.
Okay. And what we normally do in terms of, once we get the proposals in, we'll put together a chart for you that kind of shows bullet points of each of these categories as to what we feel in kind of going through the proposals, just kind of a way to help out the process so you can kind of see, you know, how many CPAs do they have on staff? How much district work do they do? You know, kind of some of the kind of bullet points to help out the process and obviously the fees and stuff.
Yeah, and just for the record also, that under the statute, if compensation is not one of the factors and not used to evaluate the firms, the board, sitting as the board, not the audit committee, negotiates a contract with the firm ranked first. That's how the statute's laid out. If compensation is one of the factors, which is one of the factors, and used in evaluation, the board shall select the highest ranked qualified firm or must document in the records the reason for not selecting the highest ranked qualified firm. Once again, that's just the difference.
So do we need a motion for you to carry out this?
I'll make the motion to carry out for our audit process or committee members, whatever.
I think first motion would be to appoint the board to appoint itself as the audit committee. Is that correct, Stephen?
That's correct. Point to committee members.
That was your motion, wasn't it?
That was my motion, to appoint the board as the committee members.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And then the second step would be to establish the criteria on page 72 with any changes that the board would like to the evaluation and ranking form.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to adopt evaluation and ranking form on page 72 with the amendment, as I stated earlier, that in trying to determine which of professionals are of ability, that we ask them to return with their proposal any problems, admonitions, or assessments they've had with the American Institute Certified Public Accountants and/or the SEC.
Question. If you go along with that, which I don't have a problem with, but that basically says that if they pass that, all of them are going to have 25 points.
If that's, if that's your, meaning if that's your standard for professional standing ability that you have not had in...
They all get 25.
They all would get 25, if, you know, again, they have to make...
That's what it is.
Because you would still want to keep the 100 points total.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seems like a lot of work when we have someone who...
You connect the legislature for that.
CPA Full Employment Act.
Anything else?
Go right along with the...
Establishing actual authorization to proceed with the RFP, which I received.
I like the motion to proceed with the RFP.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That brings us to 6A, P-PAC report.
There's got to be something going on everywhere.
He just looked like he was totally out of sight.
Phil Measy, P-PAC, you've got the written report. I'll just answer any questions you might have. I don't think there's anything very dramatic in it.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Measy?
No.
Doesn't look like it, Phil.
No.
Thank you for your patience.
That was priceless.
Okay, got the consent agenda in front of us now. Anybody have any items from the consent agenda that they want to pull?
No.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve consent agenda items 7A through D.
So moved.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's moving right along. Budget.
Now the fun.
We were moving right along.
Yeah. Okay, so I think our schedule tonight was to review the CIP, but I know Mr. Banks had brought up the last meeting, trying to go through the budget and really find any type of cuts or alternatives, or just really go through it and see what can be done. I know Mr. Grant had brought, you know, a few of his ideas to the board as well, so I kind of, you know, factored those in and went through there. Now, I put the summary, just to kind of show that, you know, based on each org unit under the general fund, there wasn't any real standout. I mean, some we lowered, we really did go through them when we first went through the entire budget. The issue is the storm cleaning, which we had originally 500,000. There was the position that was approved at 100,000 total payroll cost. So those are really, you know, the big issues. When going through it, you know, I kind of put down the ideas that we can go through here. The position that was approved at 100, more realistically, with the salary and benefits, all that, is going to be more like a total of 75,000. So there's no problem, I see that reducing that by 25,000 for the total payroll expenses. The storm water, I know there's the one estimate, and they've been working on it, I believe they've been working on it, that you guys approved a few weeks back. You know, that could be lowered from 5 to 350, if that, if you guys believe that that would get us through the year. If not, you know, until we come up with some other alternative or a better estimate, that could be an option. I know it was brought up, using reserves to kind of offset the operating cost. You know, I definitely do not recommend that, where I, I believe, and Stephen had mentioned, at the last board meeting, kind of the norm was three months, we were kind of right there. You know, I did some research and some digging, and GFOA, they recommend at an absolute minimum two months, with three to four being the norm some. Some places, I actually went on other governmental entities, not necessarily special districts, they don't go less than six months. Based on a $3 million operating budget, because we also have cash flow. Our money comes in at one point.
750.
It has to carry, and we have to have that money at certain times. So just a $3 million operating budget, 750,000 would be three months. So at that, we are at essentially the bare minimum based on that.
Mike, can you stop right there? We need something, and Stephen, you're going to have to prepare it. How much money do we have in reserve in the general fund? Not in the enterprise fund, in the general fund. How much, as you say, 750, and I agree with the three months. I think that's a good, safe way of running a ship. But if we've got 750 in reserve, or anything less than that, and throw in the capital items, this ship's sinking. It don't work. The math just doesn't work.
Yeah, and, you know, Stephen can go into more detail.
So we need to know, how much money do we actually have in general fund reserve?
And for capital, because, and maybe you can go more into this, Stephen, I know I looked, and there's like 700 and some in the capital fund, general fund, and then there's unassigned cash. And I know you gave me a brief explanation of that, maybe if you go a little bit more into that, the unassigned that's in there. Does that also include our capital program?
No. So, there's two pieces to this. The first piece is completely separate capital improvement fund. It's 100% separate. We treat it that way right now, and, you know, I'm looking at the June financials that are in the agenda, page 102. There's 786,000 that is in, I mean, that's all cash in there. That is what's in your capital project fund.
So that's purely for capital?
That's purely for capital.
Okay.
And again, it's basically, you know, when you come up to your plan that you're going to look at for your budget, you know, dollar for dollar, this money should cover your plan in a perfect world. And even if you're doing five years, you know, whatever number that is, this is the money that should go towards that.
But this is capital. What about operating?
Now, every year, we budget from 001, the general fund, a certain amount that we transfer in to fund future projects. This year, I believe it's about 160,000, 150,000. That's the only money that goes in there. No assessments go in there, you know, nothing else goes in there unless the board were to authorize a transfer of additional funds into that capital project.
How much cash, maybe?
Now, the second part of that-
Do we have an operating?
Yes. So when you look at the operating, and what Mike was talking about is, in terms of an emergency fund, we have 700,000. And then you have an unassigned amount of about 1.7 million. So of that, I believe I gave you a number of-
Yours was last, you know, like 750?
Yeah, 750 was what I would say, okay, I'm going to definitely give you this cash. The rest of it is going to depend upon where the year ends. You know, because that 750 could go up to well over a million if you don't spend everything you're going to need. I don't want to give you, you know, too much, and then you say, oh, wait a minute, you know, I've done this number-
Kenny's got another lift station.
Yeah, well, you know, so that's-
That's enterprise. It doesn't have anything to do with it.
Exactly. But, you know, so that is where I can say for sure, you got, you know, 750,000. I believe, based on the spending and the good job that they have done, it's probably closer to a million to a million three after year end, meaning all in cash, I can pull this money and, you know, not have to worry about, you know, doing anything. But even with that a million three, to Mike's point, a lot of districts will have a three month cushion. And really, that's because of the nature of assessments. You assess basically as of October 1, but you don't want to get a whole lot until December. So you got to have cash available to be able to do things between those, you know, in those three months. So that's kind of where that number comes from. Obviously, you guys are a little bit different, and every district is different, you know, in the sense of you've got a utility fund, you've got some other emergency things. But if you're asking me how much cash right now, I'd say 750. How much cash do I believe by year end? Probably closer to a million, million three, you know, and everything else I think you're going to have to use for the rest of the year.
So if I recap, 786 cash capital.
Yes.
750 cash operating, and 700,000 cash emergency.
You're close there, but I would say-
What's the number?
I would say 750 is what we've tagged as your reserve for the three months, and then another maybe 600,000 to get up to like a million three. And that was kind of the number when we did our slides back when I first started this, I gave you a million three was the approximate balance of the cash reserves.
So then to reduce the impact of this rate, to lessen it, cut it, we meet the 750 operating, which is what we want to do. We could take 350, 400,000 of the 786 and apply it to 2019 capital expenditures, such that it's the same thing of dividing 400,000 by 6200 residents and cutting it by, what is that, 70? So that bill that was 115 or 11491 would only be 60.
Just so I'm clear, you're saying in addition to the 220,000 that staff has recommended in this memo, you're saying to apply another 450,000 on top of that?
Well, you've got, if, whether you keep-
The 220 is cost, is cutbacks, right? That's cost saves.
You've got 500,000 in storm sewer cleaning, first of all, which I believe should be amortized over 20 years anyway, but alone-
And staff is recommending to reduce that to 350 in this version.
Well, whether it's 350 cash, or whether it's 350 toward a principal interest payment, we can argue about that later. My point is, is that take 400,000 or 350, and simply use that cash to pay for that, and that's the same net impact of dividing 350 by 6200, and that's the reduction in the assessment, correct?
You can, that's well within the board's rights to use those cash reserves. The only, the only caveat to that is making sure you're comfortable that obviously, once those reserves are used, you, you know, they're used.
Well, I did something else, and I, using Pelican Reserve, because they seem to be about five years ahead of us, go through and analysis, I don't know how in-depth you all went into this, but look at Pelican Reserve's reserve account that they put in, in the budget. It's double Rs. Double Rs. They're doing, putting in capital reserve to the tune of 119 per PE. We're putting in less than 60. It doesn't make sense. We've got to, to keep up and pay for these capital expenditures we've got, or we're going to go dead, dead into red ink. We got to build that 156,000? It's got to be doubled. It's got to be doubled. The math doesn't work any other way.
Yeah, but using-
You're going to run out of money.
But if you're using cash reserves, that's not going to go do anything to build that reserve.
Right.
Well, right now, you're putting in 156 and taking out, if we go with this chart, on general fund, you're taking out 300,000 a year, you're going down. You won't make it. You need more cash in there to supplement the, what do you call it, the five-year plan. It just won't work. You haven't got enough money. Unless you want to completely drain the full 786,000, take 350 out now and take, what is it, 416 next year, and it's gone. You've got to continue to build up the reserve, which is what Pelican Reserve is doing, and it's working. We're not doing that. We've got to come up with that, that plan of how we're going to finance this going first. First thing is long-term financing. Second thing is, is the reserve in there that keeps our head above water on the going below into red ink. Those are our only choices.
Can I get the word in? This is an election year. We used to call it silly season, which means that everybody is looking more closely at the decisions we make, and that's what representative democracy is all about. And while the increase in the O1 account assessment is 22%, it's only 10 a month. So we need, we need to keep our eye on the ball and understand that, first of all, our residents are not being grossly overcharged. Secondly, we've got a lot of buildup demands, and they're not all going to be paid for from the enterprise fund. And certainly, borrowing for a five-year project makes a lot less sense than borrowing for a 20-year project, your expenses, whether it's even a local bank, the escrows and the fees here, and the legal fees there, and the hidden fees there, don't make a five-year borrowing the smart thing to do, wouldn't you agree? All other things being equal?
Yeah, and to that, and I know you had mentioned SRF, maybe the storm sewer cleaning. I haven't spoke to them, but I did reach out to Iberia, and I went and met with them, and on financing options, and she said, yes, they would finance storm sewer cleaning, but absolutely no more than five years. It's kind of, there's no, there's, and there's no collateral other, and obviously, it'd be the debt service, it'd be the pledge revenues towards it. They wouldn't finance it more than, than five years. It could be tax exempt or taxable. It's tax exempt, it's actually only going to be a discount of like, not even one and a half percent, she thought, so it's going to cost you more.
Well, keep in mind, we're looking, we're looking at the wrong picture here, though. I agree with what you're saying, but we're looking at the wrong picture. It's not 500,000, guys. It's 2 million to clean the sewers in Gateway.
Well, you don't know that. You're just pulling that out of your ear. You told us that.
Bill, Bill, no, I'm not, no, I did not. No, I didn't, Bill. I got it from the bids we used.
From who?
The bids, we just got. I used the bids.
Oh, I haven't seen-
I applied the bids.
Have you, who's seen the bids? I haven't.
Chris, Chris gave them on Gateway Greens, we had them a month ago, month and a half ago?
You may have been absent.
You may have been gone. You may have been gone.
That might be-
We're not going to do them all.
This is my point, Bill.
And we're not going to do them all in one year, even in that event.
You can by doing it by debt funding SRF.
You cannot. Physically, you can't. We can't find contractors to do half of the work that we want done in a quality way.
Bill, we haven't tried. We haven't tried. We haven't tried. I don't know why, how you say we can't, we haven't tried.
We've tried lots of things and found out that there are not as many quality contractors around as we'd like to think there are.
I'm totally opposed, though, to sit in there and talk about 500,000 when our need is 2 million. I mean, it's real. It's not going away. We've got to clean these sewers.
You'd be hitting them for five years to finance it, to cover the principal and interest, and-
It'll kill you if you go cash.
And then you're also going to be tacking on money that you're going to have to add to keep maintaining them.
It's insane.
It's, either way, you're looking at a few years of high assessment, whether it's covering the loan or it's paying for-
Much rather go 20-year SRF, if we can-
And that's if.
Can get it approved.
And I haven't, I haven't spoken to them, but-
But at this point in time, by going either 350 or 5, at least we have enough money to get us going. If they then come back, alls we do is convert 2 million to 20, what do you call it, 20-year financing at 2%, throw in the extra soft cost to do the bond, the bond validation, figure out what that is, but I can tell you, it's one hell of a lot less of what it would be just principal alone. 20 years would be 100,000 a year. I'll pay, take and put 100 plus the interest, 130,000 a year, any day of the week before I spend 500,000 a year for four straight years. That makes no sense at all.
And I get it, but, you know, and then you're also paying the 100 and some thousand for 20 years.
Correct.
And you're also throwing, what, 100, another 200 on top of that still to maintain them.
But take 2, but take 2 million and that 500,000 a year, which divided by 6200 users, because keep in mind, Pelican Reserve's not participating in this.
I don't even want to-
That is a heck of a lot of money.
It's, yeah, and I see, but, you know, it's also too, or, and you want to get the assessments lower and, you know, you can accept them, but it's a maintenance item.
These items, we're, we're trying to drive them. I mean, if there's, you know, like, I don't disagree with you or, or agree necessarily, because I just don't know enough about it, but we're talking about 500 versus a 2 million. That's, that's, that should come from Chris. Like, the plan on the whole cleaning, whether we do a certain portion or whatever, I mean, Chris needs to be presenting that information to the board on, here's, we're going to do all of Gateway, here's staff's plan to do that. I don't think we should be sitting here going back and forth on-
You seen the plan?
No. Have I seen what?
Have you seen the plan?
I've seen what plan?
The one you just asked for.
No.
You seen it? Neither have I.
I know, well-
Neither have I. When are we going to get a plan? Why aren't we doing a plan?
Well, that's, that's-
What staff's, what staff's plan?
Push back to staff, because we can, we can sit there and go talk back and forth around-
But my point is-
Solucing, but we don't, we're not, that's not our job, is to solution. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm saying, we're going to argue about financing, even, but we're going to-
Our deal is to solve a problem.
Beginning of a discussion around budgeting, and that's not getting us anywhere.
Yeah, and the fact is, right now, with the money that we've got for the one year, we're in good shape. Whether we go decision to keep doing that every year, in which case, every resident's going to see an increase, up, 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 every year, or we do a long-term, which spreads it out over time. But we've got enough time to check with SRF to verify they're going to let us do it.
And I don't disagree with that approach. I'm just saying, we're having conversations about long-term planning in a final, well, one of, you know, in a budgeting meeting where it's completely out of order. I mean, either we agree with the reduction to 350, or we pull the 500 out altogether while we put a long-term 2 million plan together. It just, I feel like we're spinning on wheels.
I just don't like spending cash, cash, on something that can be logically utility debt financed. It just doesn't make sense. Don't know any utility that does it. They don't do it.
And one of the things that we wanted to look at was creating a stormwater utility, which would also pay for some of this cleaning.
Because this is maintenance, you know, we're not-
It's maintenance, right. So, don't lose sight of that, that we're talking about going out and borrowing 2 million for five years. We don't even know if we really need that. And then that, we're going to create a stormwater utility.
That doesn't have anything to do with cleaning the sewers. Nothing to do with cleaning the sewers. the sewers. Nothing. Absolutely nothing.
As in this year?
It won't this year, right.
Right.
But going forward, it will.
Yeah, the only thing at hand, in my opinion, is the, the $2 million, whether it's 2 million one, 2 million two, or 1.8. The issue is, how are you paying for it? The best for the residents of this community to pay for it is long-term financing.
Or a stormwater utility.
Stormwater utility has the same authority and the same problem. How do you pay for it? They have the same options. They don't have any other magical ways to get the money. None. Not, no way, no how. Assessment and/or borrowing, that's it. Even with a stormwater utility. I've done tons of them. They don't have any other choice. And grant funds don't exist.
Well, we're not gonna assess and then move it to a stormwater utility. The stormwater utility is just like potable water irrigation sewer, stormwater utility. It's, it would be part of our bill. Am I, am I wrong?
The stormwater utility would just have a separate method of generating revenue. That's all it would have. It would only have the stormwater component.
It's still gonna pay.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, you're still gonna pay.
That's correct. But it creates a separate, it creates a separate account that is, that is responsible for that, not trying to figure out how we're going to, what do we need? How are we gonna fund it? This, this funds it, and it, and we know how much is in there and how much we're gonna use every year.
In, in, in essence, you're just gonna take the waterway management plan component of our deal, and if you're related to stormwater management, you're gonna pull that component out. So, this assessment drops, this one is a new one, and they're the same. It doesn't change anything. What it does allow is that the people that pay for stormwater-related deals are billed based upon their contribution. Those that have a huge impervious surface, they're gonna pay the big bucks. Those that don't have a huge impervious surface are going to see a major reduction in their costs.
Allows us a better method of managing.
Better, that's exactly right. Yeah. But at this point in time, I don't think we have to make a decision. I think Doug hit it on the head. The issue is at hand, do we wanna take 500 and make it 350? I think either one of those numbers give us the allowance, but I'm going back to what I said earlier. Take whatever that number is and take it out of capital to cut the cost going forward and reduce the rate.
Of the 350?
Yes.
Until we can look at a plan, 'cause if I understand what you're saying, is you're almost treating the, this like our Langback restoration.
Yes, exactly.
It's a holistic approach. We can break it down, and we can fund it, and whether that's a two-year plan, or three-year, or whatever, one year, doesn't matter. But it has to be addressed that way.
That's $56.45 of the 114 that comes off with one blink of the eye. So, instead of a 27% rate increase, he cut it to, what, 13?
Mrs. Flaherty, thank you. I wanna thank Mr. Kraft for taking the time to figure out a way to reduce the budget, okay? With his way, he has a lower price. It came to $79.43 that way.
Per year.
Per year. And I did get calls about the 100, questions, 115 or 114. I did too. So, people are, were concerned that it was high, and, you know, knowing that it'll probably go up again next year.
Where'd you get those facts there that you just talked about?
The $79.43?
Yes.
I subtracted 114.91, which was put in the letter by mistake, and subtracted $35.48.
Okay, so you're saying 70 some dollars is left?
79.43, yes.
Okay, but did you take into consideration any use of the capital reserves?
Did not.
So, if you took 350, which is $56, you could take 70 and reduce it to 20.
But we could also keep the money in the reserves so that we do have it, 'cause you never know if it's, reserves are good for an emergency, 'cause you never know what that might happen. We might get another hurricane this year, and this whole building might blow down.
We've got 700,000 setting, 600,000 setting in an emergency right now. I don't see doubling it up. I just don't see any reason why to take, if you've got a capital reserve account, use it for capital reserve, for capital.
Well, that cleaning storm sewers, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, is not capital. That is far from capital.
That's right.
SRF-
Large operation.
SRF, it felt that it was, because that's why they're considering it as eligible.
But you're reducing it.
You know, you may be right about that, but I will be very surprised if Bill's gonna let us bond a, a five-year cleaning project.
No, not five-year. 20.
I mean, it's-
20 years.
That's like financing cleaning bathtub.
Like I said, you may be right, but I, I would be very surprised. Madam Chairman, I think, I've heard enough of this. I think we oughta-
I just wanna make one comment, and then we can move on. I'll, I'll let you have the floor. I have concerns about lowering our reserves, because, as Mr. Kinkle said, we don't have a lot sitting in reserves. It just seems like that is not a very expedient way to run the district. We need to have the protections of the reserves, and if we're ever going to borrow any money, we better have something in escrow or collateral to back that up. They're not just gonna write us a check, so.
That's why, Margaret, I proposed doubling the capital reserve to offset this going forward for our five-year plan.
That would increase the assessment.
Yeah, so if you take 156,000, take 156,000 divided by 6,200, that's what, 20 bucks? So, you're adding 20 back in. But it starts building the base that we have for the capital, 'cause we're gonna go-
So, we're gonna take money out of the reserves to reduce it this year and double it next year?
No, 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 no. Listen, this is, I think I'm the only one that's doing this. Have you looked at the five-year expenditures for general fund?
I see where you're going with that.
You know what I'm talking about?
I see where you're going with it.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is avoid putting it on the people all at one time.
Is there a way, Stephen, that we close this year, and you say that number that's like 700, 750, maybe closer to a million, that we can then just, the board can make a motion next year to pull 300,000 out of that to go ahead and do it, and it's not out of our operating?
If you have any, any additional money that's left over, call it left over for lack of a better word, goes into your fund balance at year end. At that point, the board has the same opportunity, like any other reserve, to assign it to a project, to transfer it to the capital project fund, or to let it sit there. So, again, if it's, if you're, you're running very well in terms of your spending for June, if you, again, if you have a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's, it's done all the time. That gets carried forward, you can use that terminology, carried forward into the new year, and then can go towards spending, you know, in the new year. But it's, you know, it's all driven by the board, you know, in terms of doing that.
Just as a matter of interest, we have, have quite a bit of unassigned reserves in Pelican, and we will probably be coming forward to you in the next couple of months to move a half a million dollars, 500,000, from those unassigned reserves into our capital reserve so that we can keep the funding of the capital reserve down as we go forward. So, that, that is something that's open to you.
In essence, it's what I'm trying to do here.
Yeah.
I mean, and I would love for us to speak in terms of the actual dollar amount increases as opposed to percentages, 'cause we could talk about 22%, 27%. That sounds like a pretty big number, but when you do break it down, we are talking about $10, $15 a month, which, you know, is more palatable. I mean, any increase is an increase, and no one wants tax increases, but when we speak in terms of dollar amounts, for, I mean, you, we sat right here and had Kenny tell us that a listation that he had budgeted two is gonna cost, what he budgeted for, for, for two updates or, or improvements, is gonna be absorbed by one. Everything that we do and we've seen is more expensive than what, what we anticipated. And, and it's not because we haven't been planning, it's because we just haven't been looking after, you know, a lot of this stuff. So, let's just, you know.
And I wanna remind everybody that we've got five wells that we very well could be having to fill and cap and pull pipe out of the ground, and that has already been told that's gonna be expensive.
Right, and that was kinda my thing, too. Be, you know, I have, and here I think about moving forward the much. I mean, we're, we have all these projects. We're just trying to grab and pool for money wherever we can find it, and if we have an opportunity to free up money that could be used and still fill our needs, our immediate needs, I mean, there's a lot going on, so trying to grabbing more is-
And let me just add us one thing. So, wherever we land with this budget, and I appreciate, Chris, I think you've done a little roadshow, you know, trying to talk through the budget and everything. That's great. I think as soon as we can, when we finalize it, we need to have a little white paper or something that comes out that shows, here's the projects that we have slated for next year. Here's why we're doing them. Here's our three-year plan and what you can expect, because if I'm just looking at an increase, I'm gonna go, you know, and, and we've seen it written down in multiple things. We're spending money arbitrarily. We're spending things that don't matter. I, I don't think we're spending money that, where it doesn't matter, at least from my position. So, I think if we need, we need to communicate a little better so our residents, when they do get phone calls, why, why is my taxes increasing 22 or 27%? We could say, well, you know, it's because of this, this, and this. These are things that are, that are necessary in order for us to continue to maintain and servicing our, our community.
Let's, let's talk about that. Capital improvement plan, page 29 on the budget to general fund. You go back to page 28, we're carrying over 528,600. If I'm reading this right, is that correct? So, that means we're having to pay for that somehow, some way. I've got some thoughts.
What, page 29?
Page 29. We got 500,000. I thought this was deader than a doornail a year or two years ago, that we are not building stadium lighting, nor planning to build stadium lighting at the soccer field. We've already had the Bentley Electric tell us $30,000 a year will more than generate enough fund for repair and replacement of the lights. So, there's 70,000 out of the budget you can pull immediately.
I thought we had gone over this last year.
I thought we did, too, but it's in there again. I don't know why that 100,000 is in there for 19, 20, all the way to 23. We could do it for 30,000 a year, according to Bentley Electric. Second thing is, and I think this is a, I hope this is a typo, pool rehab and improvements, Gateway Commons, $110,000 in parentheses, renovation bathrooms, toilet sinks and counters, then I go down a line, bathroom renovation again. Are we talking about $160,000 for renovating a bathroom? Gee, many Christmas, that price is outlandish.
And when I had talked to Mike, it, the reason is, is it's a, it's kind of an unknown. He's been trying to get contractors out there to start it, because it is in this fiscal year, and he hasn't been able to. And with doing potentially, I think they're talking about putting some type of coating, anti-slip coating around the whole area. It'll be redoing both buildings, that little pump house deal with the bathrooms there. I'm not up there much. I don't know too much about it.
I could build a house for that price.
You could build a new pool for that.
That's, it's absurd.
I mean, we could completely remodel that pool, which is probably more important than up, than spending 100,000 in bathrooms, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it's absurd.
For the amount of 20 people that go to that pool on a, on a daily basis.
So, my thought is on that, is cut, cut that out. Then the other one is the FPL Eastman fence, $30,000. Those fence go for about, a good old cheapo, black chain link fence, 15 a foot.
Where are we talking about?
Next line item up, FPL Eastman fence.
The fence, though-
That's 2,000-
Is the one that's right off of Griffin Drive where the white is, where you'd see it everywhere.
The post, well, I'm trying, I'm trying to get to this. That's 2,000 feet is what $30,000 will buy ballpark. There's 22,000 feet around the FPL Eastman. Where's the 2,000 feet going?
I, I guess it's-
And I guess, why are we doing it?
But there's a fence right across the street from Griffin.
So, it's only that.
Yeah, it's a decorative fence.
That's, that's not 2,000 feet.
We're going from the backside of the church, picking up some of that and then coming around.
So, what we're saying is it is indeed 2,000 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
That's-
We've got pickup trucks coming in all the time.
Uh, anyway, so my deal is I'd cut back, one, get rid of the 100,000, replace it with 30,000. There's a $70,000 savings, and 160,000 on restrooms. I'd give them a $50,000 maximum budget to do bathrooms and tell them that's what you got.
And, and if you're wanting to remove the 100 for the lights, and it's 30 or 40, that's not capital. That's operational. You know, that's just-
No, this is, that's what Bentley Electric said, that $30,000 a year put into a fund will get money for repair and replacement of the lights. It's not capital. This, in my opinion, is, if you're gonna do that way, you just take the 30,000, put it into the operating budget, and it'll completely eliminate 100,000 out of the general fund.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if, if it's not gonna be, that's just an operational-
Yeah, it's, it's basically repair and replacement of the lights we've got.
So, we just increased the operating budget?
But you knocked 100,000 out of the other. You saved $70,000, is what you've done.
Are you making a motion?
This 100,000 was in here for stadium lights. It's just, it's worth some money.
I think you're doing some good work there. You're stealing some of my thunder, but that's quite all right. Good add to the last one, Commerce Lake's LED conversion for $80,000.
Impossible. Can we kinda do this like we did last year, where we actually-
Make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, but, 'cause I want, I want to wrap up the general fund capital in one motion.
The three that you said, minus the fence, 'cause I think the fence is-
Okay, but the 80,000 bill, what were you thinking? The, the advantage to the LED is it has long-term return.
Oh, come on.
Because it's, oh, yeah. Believe me, we've done it over at Gateway Greens. We've done it in Gateway Greens, believe me. We looked at it.
Not $80,000 worth. That's ridiculous.
Well, I don't know where the 80,000 bill came from. If 80,000 is, we have a price for Bentley or another source, that that's what it costs to convert to LED, then that's what it costs.
I'd rather convert main roads than-
Yeah.
Than Commerce Lake.
But, but my question is, and I think it's our responsibility, is where did the number come from?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
Let me know what-
I don't know where 80,000 came from.
But we're, we're being unfair to-
Well, where I was going is with, with a motion. My motion is going to be is to eliminate the stadium lighting.
Okay, number one.
Let's do them one at a time. Everybody may not agree with all of your changes.
Okay, Madam Chairman, please, please, let's do them one at a time.
Yes.
Look at the check in.
Okay, then my first motion, then.
Okay. And go slow so I can copy it, please?
Let, let's start at the top here, then, 'cause it's, all this stuff's gotta be discussed. I, in a meeting, a good example is $165,000 in there for the office building. That's 30% of X, which is $550,000. Are we committing to spending $550,000 for this building? My point being is if we're only committing to spend 300,000, 320, that ballpark, then 30% of that is 90,000, change 165 to 90 right now.
So, you're making a motion to-
Well, I think I would like that board input. Is the board ready to spend $550,000 for an office expansion? I'm not.
So, we're just gonna go-
So, we've got the, the new tent building. Have we allocated or, or are there any improvements to this building that needs to be, needs to be reconfiguring?
Well, you probably need 20, 25,000 for carpet, paint.
Probably reconfiguring some of the areas, the office furniture, you know, there's, there's some reconfiguring that, that will absolutely need to happen, or else it's pointless.
If you feel that the 165 is sufficient, even at 30% of X, and additional cost, then we'll just leave that. I just wanna make sure it's a fair number.
If we, we spent-
I'm fine with that.
Then my first motion is to eliminate the stadium lighting replacement for $100,000 and increase the operation 30,000 to a care, account for repair and replacement of the lights.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Next motion is to combine pool rehab-
One second. Just because you had sent me that number, your number was 39 something?
30. 30. 30,000 Bentley Electric told us per year.
Cause I, the email was 39, so I didn't know if we should make it 40.
Did I have a typo in my letter, email?
I don't know, but it's-
30 is what Bentley gave us. And I believe he gave Mike a letter to that extent. This has been three, four, five months ago.
Can you just forward that email with that quote to Chris?
I don't have it. I don't have it. I have just one verbally. Bentley told me, he told the staff.
I had asked Mike about that quote. He had no recollection of the-
Let's give Bentley a call, then, 'cause he, he gave me that number, 30,000.
Madam Chairman, we're not being fair to our professional management by doing it this way, by having one of our board members talking to the Bentley Electric in the-
This, this came up years, at least a year ago, Bill. At least a year ago.
We've decreased the capital improvement plan, which is what we're working on today. So, let's wait to see what they need to add to the-
Well, we need to know that before we do the budget, 'cause you gotta add that cost back in, 'cause you do have to have a cost for repair and replacement of existing lights.
But what we've done is, we've taken something, it shouldn't be in the capital, anyway.
That's correct.
Right, so we, we've stricken that amount, and that's, that's all we need to do here. The second follow-up is for, to Bill's point, management needs to go back, confirm with Bentley, what is the amount we should be putting in, in the-
Repair and-
Right, and for maintenance, to get us where we need to be. So, we're not, we're not losing that item. So, I think that's fine. We can move forward.
Then the next one is that you've got the 100-
Do we gotta get a vote on that one?
We already did.
We did that.
Yep.
No, we didn't. I'm voting.
I thought we voted, go ahead.
I said all in favor and I heard about the ayes.
We all, we all voted on that.
And I said any opposed and I heard nothing.
The next one, the pool rehab question, staff, is the 110,000 going to be spent in 2018 or is it gonna fall over into 2019, which means it's 160,000, both of which appear to be bathroom improvements?
And it's, it's two different bathroom facilities, it's the main facility and the smaller, and it needed sinks, toilets, tile, that's the reason for the high cost. And we did finally get a couple contractors to come out last week that are providing bids.
So.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. The, for 2019 is only 50,000.
2018's 110.
Right.
My question is, has that been spent?
Okay, because only in budget is 50,000, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, well, well, I, I believe he knew something. I was gonna eliminate the 50,000.
You can't, oh.
Just drop the 50,000 out and be done with it and let what the 110 pays for and be done.
So the 110 is going to move over into 19?
No, he's saying that it looks like it still could be, is it gonna be 18 or 19?
Well, if, if we get some good quotes, we'll be coming back in a few weeks to do the pool work.
My, my whole point is $160,000 for pool improvements, including bathrooms, is absurdly high.
I agree.
Absurdly high.
So do we want to remove?
I would take the 50,000 for 2019, which is, is subject at hand at 2019, take the 50,000 out.
And, and absorb that into your 110, so whatever you can.
Yes.
Yeah, and then whatever's not used this year.
Come back later.
Yeah, we'll come back later.
If you make a motion to that, in effect, I'll second it.
That's the motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
The last one, uh, the 80,000 dollars for the LED conversion, uh, I'd almost rather kick that can down the road until we know that this number is accurate. I, I don't know where that number came from.
I'd rather, I'd rather, and I will make a motion to remove it right now.
And I'll second it.
I'll third it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's every, so now that, now has a new number that's not 528. I don't know if anybody doing the math as we went along, that'd be 150, 230. So we just reduced 230,000 out of page 28 budget.
We're down to about 300,000.
So that's 230K.
I want to, may I?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, um, remove the dog park wash.
I thought we did that.
We did that last year, but they put it back in this year.
Oh, make a motion, please.
I make a motion that we move, remove the dog park wash from the 2019 budget.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're at 235,000.
Unless we can use it, uh.
Fire hydrant.
As a, as a, as a, uh, height for the.
For the fire hydrant?
Yeah.
Shows your thinking though.
All right, so that 350 that you wanted to pull out of reserve, we just hit 235 of that. How do you like that?
I do like my wife would do, I want more, do the 350 also.
And I'll tell you what I'd tell my wife, be happy with what you get.
You're brave here, aren't you?
Which really, you know.
You're gonna A for everything.
Good for you, Doug.
It's easy to say here.
The only other things I have applied to questions that I can, instead of boring everybody, some of the math in here, you and I have talked, I can't make this math work. I, how you get these numbers on page two, I'll give you an example, because maybe everybody else has the same question and they just don't want to ask.
We're, we're, what?
Go to page two, page two, version two, page two. Can anybody tell me how 44598 under area two with debt is calculated? Where in these pages is something divided by 807.38 to come up with, well, it's not really 445, it's 44598 less 9794.
Now that's history.
How, where did that come from? What, what math is done to do that calculation? I, I've tried every number under the sun in here and I can't make that math work.
Yeah, I think that's the one with the.
It must be that area two has a debt component of somewhere in the neighborhood of $355. But where is, and I assume that's principal and interest on something, where is it at in all these pages of paper?
I apologize, sorry, which number are you looking for?
Page two, area two with debt, they're paying next year 981, of which 53555 we know is the O and M assessment, or it's gonna be changed after we get done here. But you have 44598 being tacked onto their bill, of which 94, 9794 is the Lake Bank deal, which leaves about $355.
Forty-eight point four.
Where is that in the rest of this and what is it for? Is it old debt?
It is the debt service, um, area two, series 2007.
What page do I see that, Stephen, in here?
It's page 22.
Page 22. Uh, no, can't be. Page 22 is Lake Bank. Oh, I'm sorry, that's 25, sorry. Where's 22?
Oh, it's refunded bond, is it, is on the screen?
I have a page 20.
I have.
25, 26. So it's the refunding on that bond? That's the difference for those people, when does that expire?
Uh, it's, looks like next year.
2020.
2020, next year. That, next one I've got is the, down in Pelican Reserve, the 39276, how's that calculated? This is the amount that's in Gateway. This is what I was talking about earlier. In Gateway, every commercial user pays times, and you see it right up above, $535, the same unit charge that all the rest of us, the residential's pay, times one point factor, or 5.8 times the acreage. Ain't that a way in Pelican? Why? Why are they getting a 60 percent discount?
Well, and, and that was, starting in, was it 2009? That's why the, for lack of a better, the who, we're gonna get past the who for a second.
We're just saying that's what happened in 2009.
That's what happened in 2009.
But no paper trail for why?
There was a decision made at that time that the commercial EAUs did not benefit the same as everybody else within Pelican Reserve, so they were only being assessed based on a certain portion of the total budget.
I understand what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but you can't do that. You can't do that. That's not in our rules. If you're gonna do that, what, I can argue the same bet, uh, argument for every residential or every commercial user in Gateway.
Madam Chairman, we're wasting time.
What I'd like to do is.
Bill, I don't think it's wasting time if we have somebody come in here and contest us, ask us what the hell we're doing.
Well, we've been doing it since.
I know, that doesn't make it right.
I think we're wasting time.
That doesn't make it right though, Bill.
Well, we're not gonna solve it tonight, so I'm gonna.
But I can approve a budget, Margaret, that I don't believe is legal.
I'm, well, we're not approving a budget tonight. What I want to do is bring us back to page 151 of the agenda, which is, uh.
Well, we're not off the, we're not off the budget yet, are we? We haven't even gone through the, uh, enterprise capital improvement fund.
Well, what I wanted to do is bring us back to what Michael Crackle brought before us as far as reducing the, uh, stormwater position to 75, and we still hadn't, uh, talked about whether we were gonna leave the stormwater cleaning at 500 or reduce it to 350. I don't believe we've made those decisions yet. I think we need to talk about those, what he's brought before us.
I move that we reduce it to 350,000.
Okay. I'll second it. Okay, so we're gonna reduce the stormwater cleaning from 500 to 350, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
And, uh, what about the position for the stormwater management?
Question on?
In favor? Thank you.
Questions on that? We've got on our current staffing plan, 20 percent of the public works director and 35 or 40 percent of the natural resources director under stormwater management. We hired this new position, what are they gonna do?
I think that Chris will have plenty of work for him.
Well, we basically were looking at that, to have somebody, um, more full-time on the ponds, uh, the pond construction, uh, the storm sewer cleaning and maintenance activities, somebody who's out in the field and, you know, on the ponds, they're our representative out there too, and also with all the additional work with the stormwater and putting the stormwater utility together. Now I'll have to go back, because when you were talking about a staff plan, our staff plan, when we didn't have any funding, was to do the assessment methodology and initiate a stormwater utility to have a funding source for that. So that's been my plan all along, and we got some limited funding, but.
My, and I, I agree with that, I just was concerned, I don't want to see this stormwater position turn into an inspector, because that's a high-priced inspector. Immensely high-priced inspector. If he's going to be a manager, now that's a different story. Because we've got some management issues, there's no doubt about that.
And I think with, with some of that stormwater cleaning and even the pond project and related, you know, we're a little remiss, um, even on supervision of our consultants that do the pond treatment.
No, yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not checking them.
In the flowways.
But, but did I read that, Mike, you're suggesting that the 100 be reduced by 25 to 75?
That would cover total payroll expenses, salary, benefits, things like that, I think. I talked to Chris.
You want to do that as a motion?
I mean, is that?
Yeah, okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Do you have the comment?
No, is that within your threshold? I mean.
Yeah, because I think we're more be, we're just gonna push somebody more a working manager out there in around that 50, you know, low 50s, not 60s.
Okay, all right, that's what you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next one I didn't understand was the 530,000, I'm sorry, 30,000 for professional fees. Uh, what's it in there for?
We had it in this past year's budget, um, and I had looked at it, so far year-to-date, we barely charged anything to it.
But this is under general?
That, well, we have 45,000 for professional fees under our allocation of shared costs at 720, just operational admin.
But it's not, what I'm getting to, it's not assigned to any, any one task?
Not as of this moment, I don't think, do we see type of consultant or something that would come in.
The only two issues I can see are stormwater related.
Bond validation.
Bond, bond validation.
Yeah.
I, I, I wouldn't change this one.
Okay. And I personally don't want to eliminate the hurricane cleanup reserve, I think that that would be to our detriment, having gone through Irma last year, but that's my opinion.
I think you're right.
Moving forward with the purchase of a modular building, we've talked about that, we've got it in there at.
That was just kind of.
165, with a combination of 165 and whatever the number is to make 550 total, that should be more than enough to, to keep us going on that. The only other one that you didn't mention, and you and I have talked about it, is, uh, that capital reserve, and I mentioned it earlier, what Pelican Reserve is doing, and I think I went through their stuff with a fine-tooth comb, and they do it right. The 156,000 on page eight, short, my notes work, take it to 373.
And, and I agree that it should be increased, it's just for the purpose of this, it was kind of me hunting to try to cut costs and reduce the assessment.
I understand that, but our problem is, we got a five-year plan that right now, unless somebody's got something that I haven't seen, shows me that this thing is diving and it's going red. If we don't address it now, all it's gonna do is kick, well, we've done well here, kick the can down the road, we're gonna have a bigger assessment down the road. I just assumed raised that up to be in the same, uh, line of thinking of value reserve that 120 dollars, uh, per year, per EAU is not an unreasonable amount to be paying for the capital reserve, which is essentially taking the 156 to 373 or somewhere in that ballpark.
So we have, uh, we have offset about 410K through this exercise today, just for keeping score.
Kicks and giggles. So take 180,000 out of it and we're still way ahead of the game. And, and we've set up a capital reserve plan going forward that is doable and not just a joke, because the math, the math just doesn't add right now.
I don't disagree with you. What I'd like to do is take that, take this plan out a little bit more, see where the, the assessment methodology comes in, and then look at maybe a little more realistic, uh, number as we get into next year's budgeting season, which will be one year behind, but I think we might have a better understanding of what we're gonna, what we're gonna need, what we're gonna finance.
Well, Doug, I, I understand where you're coming, but I guess I don't understand the, the theory behind it. If you, if you don't like the 156 that's in there for Gateway, and what I'm asking for is double that, why, why are we accepting 363,000 at Pelican Reserve?
And, and just real.
Help me out with that.
It isn't 363 now, it's 330, but.
The one I've got shows 363.
I understand, but that's version two, we've knocked it down to 330.
Oh, so.
That's not reflected.
We have another version that we don't have.
This is the one that was approved back a few weeks ago.
So you're saying it's down to 330?
We have, we have two changes, one of them is knocking that to 330, because our capital reserve study indicated we can do that, and, and we're, as I said, we're gonna be coming forward with a request of, of $500,000.
I, I guess I kind of look at this as we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, we're reducing assessments in one area, but we're gonna go ahead and raise them in another.
Where are we at right now?
As far as I know.
Hold on, one second, uh, Stephen, oh, or Mike, whoever can answer this. How are we gonna end up, uh, this budget season? Will we be favorable to budget? Will we have, um, are we rolling over dollars?
Yeah, you'll be rolling over dollars.
You gotta roll over dollars to make it work? That's the problem.
You're saying, just so we're all clear, fiscal year 2018, as of 9/30/18, I believe we'll have some extra money left over. But we don't, we don't, one second, one, one last thing. We don't, um, we don't know what that dollar amount's gonna be yet, so we haven't, we haven't rolled it over. So with that, with those monies that are, let's see, our savings, whatever you want to call it.
An assigned role.
Yeah, so we, we typically will, um, dump that into, because we normally do this, we did it last year too, right? We, we rolled it over into reserves.
Right.
I mean, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm hoping for this year, Ed, is we come in, we end up with a little bit of surplus like Pelican has done, and then we roll that into reserves, so we don't have to increase this year, but we can look at, you know, down the road, what that would look like. And that, essentially, that's what you're looking for, that is, we want to continue want to continue to.
I'm trying to take and develop a capital, general fund, capital reserve plan that, based upon what we estimate. And otherwise, we're saying it's fictitious, that our five-year plan is doable.
Yeah.
I mean, otherwise, why are we going through this deal? This is a waste of time.
And so far, I believe, unless I've missed something, we've reduced the operating budget by 175,000. That's.
With what we've just done?
With what we just did. So if you bump that up to the 3, the assessment, you know, we didn't.
But we knocked the capital down, then they both go together, so.
Yeah.
The assessment's still going to be high, but.
The assessment's what?
The assessment would still be high if we increased the.
The capital reserve.
And we still haven't touched any of the capital reserve to move the 350 over.
And so at the end of the year, when we have monies left over, we could assign it to this capital reserve program very easily. That makes sense. Chris, I wanted to ask you something because you said that we cut your funding for the stormwater. Was that going from 500 to 350? Was that, is that a concern of you that, that we're not going to have enough money in there for you to do that work?
Well, you can only get so much done in a year in time, count how many contractors. I mean, that's part of it. I don't, I don't have a concern with that. We're going to make it work.
But we still have another 150,000 in there on top of that.
And there needs to be a much larger plan designed for that. So 350 gets us started. We can address the critical issues, and then we look at it from a larger scale.
And we've also been spending time and just finished it up. We're going through each of those plan sets and scaling off the feet of pipe and the number of structures. So we have accurate numbers to go in and bid with and to make estimates from.
Stephen, you've been punching these numbers in to know, what is the net impact of the combination of the capital and the operation that we have done on 114.91?
Well, you know, really, the assessment piece, I think, is the piece that you're really looking at.
That's what I'm saying.
So 175,000 reduction takes the increase down to $86.27. So in essence, you have reduced it by $29.48.
And that is reflective of both the capital reduction we made and the operating?
Well, no, because the capital doesn't, when you reduce your capital spending, it just means you're not going to use as much from, you know, the capital account. You know, the 700,000 we talked about, if you're only going to, you know, you're budgeting 500,000, you reduce it to 200,000, you just have $300,000 extra in that account. That doesn't translate over into your assessment number.
So we're, we're not putting any additional allowance. What it boils down to is we may run out of money in the future.
Correct.
Okay. Got you.
Mrs. Flaherty, can I make a couple other motions?
Certainly.
Okay. Believe it or not, I want to increase something. Oh, my God.
Wait, what page are you on? I want to follow up.
I want you to repeat that slowly into the my proposal.
Page 26, where it says staffing, where it says receptionist. I have seen people come in here and how she has to handle the people. I would like to make that $14 an hour, even 14. And I already talked to Mr. Kraft. It's 13 something. I already talked to Mr. Kraft. It wouldn't change anything in that budget.
That doesn't have anything to do with this.
Yeah, that's, that's a function of Mr. Schumacher.
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with this.
I just figured, aren't that finished? All right. Page six, or agenda page 161. I've asked a couple of times and Hammond got a response. The sod replacement for the soccer field, I know it's only 15,000. However, with mainscape, mainscape is supposed to replace the sod. Why do we need another amount for the sod replacement? Do we have one?
I have to check on that. I don't have a specific.
Does mainscape's contract, is it for sod replacement?
Yes, it is.
But I don't, is where I think the disconnect might be, is it might be like.
It's a volume.
A little bit, whereas if they're doing the whole field, I don't know. I'm not really dealing with that.
If there's a volume restriction, that's what we need to look at.
It's patches, yeah. No, it's a whole amount.
Well, if that's the case, we could tell them to re-sod the whole soccer complex. There has to be some kind of restriction.
Yeah, there's got to be a restriction.
Whether it's a lot.
Better, it's an add-on cost to the unit price.
Something that's, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but I know there's, there's got to be a restriction on there. That's.
It's just that I just can't see paying twice for sod that they've already paid for with the mainscape contract.
Can you look into that and see why? I'm sure there was a reason.
Right.
And if that's, that's a good note. I mean, even, that's something that needs to be clearly specified. I mean, aside, aside, and it's, you know.
Mrs. Flaherty?
This one's not going to go over well.
And the other ones did?
No, they didn't. Okay. I would like to.
Give me a page number, please.
Oh, page, page three, or agenda page 158. I'd like to reduce our supervisor's fee to 175 per meeting.
That doesn't save anything.
I have no comment.
Yeah.
I'm just making suggestions, an extra we can add.
You can give yours back.
Yeah.
Come in.
It's not much.
Do you have anything else, Kathleen?
Are we on capital improvements?
That's where I was heading next.
Okay. Well, I'll let you go first, and then I can add on.
My motion is, is to the sheet that was laid in front of everybody, which has the backing of Tetra Tech, and I believe staff is to approve that page as the capital improvement plan for the enterprise fund.
And this would replace a page in?
Yeah, the one that was behind the general fund. I think it's page 30. Replaces page 30.
No, I have questions.
For fiscal 19, it increases from 1,521 to 2,804. Is that what, or two, I'm sorry.
The one that's billed that we were handed out doesn't have an 18 on there. It just starts with 19.
Ed, real quick, I know it was brought up because we had put it in, $400,000 for generator for irrigation pumps. On the one that you had, you had pushed out to 2020. I didn't know if that was just because you were pushing everything that you had added out a year because of the comments from Tetra Tech, or if you really did want to push that out an additional year.
Go either way, whatever staff is, those generators are, wait a minute, generators for irrigation pumps. Oh, you, I see. I moved it for what, I'll tell you why I did it. I'm hoping you get SRF funding for them.
Okay.
So what's the total on that page you handed out?
I think the numbers at the bottom bill are correct, if Mike's formula worked.
Eight million?
Well, if you go up to very total, it'd be 444. That's 800,393961. 10 million on the nose.
10 million.
10 million on the nose, if my math is right. I'm sorry, hold on. It's 44470, so 900,000, nine plus three, one is four million. Four million and down below, oh, yeah, there's probably another six, so about 10 million.
You've got more brass than 76 trombones.
Do they have brass? Horn bones or trombones?
Trombone.
Trombones.
Do you really expect us to approve that without having any previous look at it?
Ask me at the last meeting to go and get the decision and the opinion of our engineer. I got it, and this is his recommendation. The only thing, the only thing I've done is taken his recommendation for stuff being done in two phases and split it up on here. It's his recommendation of needs we have going forward in the way of capital improvements for our enterprise fund.
Chris?
It's not my, it's not what I like. It's not what I want. It's what we need to do to run this utility. You've got an irrigation system that you heard.
Is this, is this staff's plan? I mean, I know that it's helped out on this, but I don't want it to, I don't want him to be in a position where, you know, he's the face of this.
Mike and I have been working on this for months.
I need you to tell the board, this is your plan, that you, this is what you agreed to, this is what you need.
The plan that staff put together originally is the one in your budget packet. This one has been massaged by Mr. Tankle and Tetra Tech, and Mike's been working on it. And there's a couple of reasons for that, too. Not only projects you see, but when you're designing your connection fee, a lot of it's based on your capital expenditure. So the higher your capital plan is, the higher you can charge on connection fee to your utility system. Something like that. I'd let Mike speak to some of the specifics of it, but could our staff get that amount of work done each year? You know, I think it would be a struggle. You'd certainly be having some extra consultants on board.
So is this, is this the request that you are behind and that you agree with, this is what you are asking for? Because this is coming, should come from your desk.
Well, it's, it's, I'm just actually starting to digest it. And I really didn't, you know, like I say, my input and the staff got together with the original sheet, and that's what you see there is coming from the board.
And we've got principal and interest at 151,000 annually. I'm just looking at the first one, which is borrowing $2.3 million. That ends up costing all of the taxpayers $3 million.
Now, what, what I'm proposing to do is, and we can't do it now because I don't have it finalized and approved, but I'm trying to show you that on the phase one work, which totals about 2,351.
Where's phase one?
Phase one are the ones that are marked with a single asterisk. Those all add up to 2,351. For a 20-year SRF loan at 2.5%, which is the number, your principal and interest is 151,000. You pay that as 151,000. The 151,000 then goes back as a line item every year for 20 years to cover those items. Likewise, phase two, that is 3,370, you debt finance those, and the principal and interest is 217. That's how you do a utility.
And that's $365,000 annually, but.
Correct.
What, what gives me the heartburn is the total amount that.
The rest of it.
Costs a whole lot more to all of the taxpayers to borrow money to do these projects.
I don't think you're going to win that argument with the taxpayers. You go tell them that they're going to put in a $2 million item, you got to pay for it cash upfront. They're going to tell you you're nuts. No utility does this, Mark.
You're not going to pay for it, everything all upfront.
That's correct. And that's what I tried to point out by this. The rest of this is going to be paid for with our normal capital improvement monies that are generated in the utility fund, which should work out. And in fact, what would have been nice is that we have a plan like this that shows all that cash, and then shows with the revenue we got coming in, the expenses going out, that you stay above and out of red ink. I believe it. I believe it does.
And the Arborwood main extension, why isn't that being paid for by the developer?
Because it benefits more than the developer. It benefits Pestoia and Prado. We've had troubles up there with water. We wouldn't have had half the problems we had up there with water if we would have had a looped line. It's all dead end.
Madam Chairman, for your information, I'm not prepared to vote in favor of any of this until I see in writing recommendations from management and our engineer.
You got it from the engineer?
I don't, I never saw anything like this from our engineer.
Bill is in the, in the board book, wasn't he?
He was playing on the table.
It was in the board book. No, 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 no. The engineers' comments on the need and necessity of these are in the board book. And it's what you asked for at the last meeting.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Just for clarification, you have here down for refurbish of irrigation zone, 55% allocation. Where do we get the 55% allocation?
No, that was, it reverts back to 730. That would be 70.
It would be 70. So therefore, that amount is wrong. The 36, it would be 46, 200?
Yes.
All right. May I ask another question?
Yes.
Thank you. We want, you want to buy another pickup truck?
Yes.
What are you going to do with the Gators? I see them sitting in the garage most of the time.
Well, actually, they're actually out quite a bit. I'm hoping to get rid of them.
So, so do you plan to sell the Gators so that this will?
We might keep one.
And sell it and put the money towards the pickup truck?
Yeah, they don't worth much money though.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, they're maintenance nightmares. We just had the brake adjusted and the set of tires. And when you do that, it's 1,500 here, 2,200 there. It's cheaper to run a Toyota truck than it is to run one of those Gators. And there's huge safety considerations with those things operating on the road or even on the side of the road.
Thank you.
And we're going to get that computer in the pickup truck office right now. That's our plan.
Yeah, that's not just a truck, that's an office.
Yes, that's your only office.
Are, are you prepared to comment on this, or would you like to bring this back to us at the next?
I just haven't looked at the price interexamined at that close. If the capital, you know, kind of goes up, it's fine with me with the connection side of it. As I said, it's more how much work can you actually get done.
I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
I think this is to Kenny. He wants to increase the emergency bypass pump master stations to 100,000 from 62 that you had in the budget.
Line item?
Yeah. Yeah. It's.
Danny thought those numbers were low.
That was, that was Tetra Tech.
They thought the numbers were low.
Okay, because I was figuring Kenny would know better.
On the, on the master station for the bypass pumps?
Yep.
Exactly what is that, Kenny? What are you looking for there?
With a, with a, with a bypass pump as opposed to a generator, they are superior in just about every way possible. With the generators, you're depending on the pumps, the panel.
You're talking about a pump that's on a truck or portable that you put a couple of suction hoses and a discharge hose?
Yep.
And instead of having a power generator?
Yes. And if you should lose the station, it doesn't matter. That pump will still pump that station. It does not matter.
Then that number's not out of line at all then.
I just was wondering.
Lot of money.
You would understand that better.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, everybody. Where does that put us? Are we still in the same place assessment-wise?
The assessment-wise, it would just be the reduction that we talked about earlier.
To 79 or?
Yeah, it'd be $86.27 increase.
I have one more question. Yes, Mrs. Flaherty. It's from Mr. Hall. Could you just tell me where these emergency master station bypass pumps would go?
The first one would be in Stony Brook Master Station. And then we would look either at Station B1 or Girl Scout.
Did I tell you anything?
I just, I was just curious, okay?
She didn't tell you where they're at?
No.
She doesn't understand where B1's at?
I don't.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. That would be on the corner of Gateway Boulevard and Commerce Lakes.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to, I appreciate that. Just wanted to know where they would go. So there's already a place for them. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
When we get into, and where are we at with the rate study?
I just thin out for a little bit.
And the rate studies about is basically wrapped up. We made a few changes to it to add a 15% R and R, but those documents are done. And as soon as we finish the budget, we were going to.
That's what I was wondering. I didn't bring it up, but on page 17, that reserve capital program of 153, I can't picture that that's going to fly on his study. He's going to jack that number big time.
Yep. We went to 15%.
To what, what does that raise to?
I'd have to look at the number, but we were at three or 4% previously.
I, my calculations took it to 348. Now I have a feeling he's, he's going to be in, I'm sorry.
And that's based on?
I went back and took the five-year projection.
Okay.
Took out the loan on the assumption you get the loan, took out the capital, the rest with the money financed, and that's what it took to keep it from going red. And I think that's probably what he'll do. I didn't have anything else on the budget.
So the totals down here on this page don't add up.
What page?
If you're moving the one, this one with all the.
The capital.
Eight million, $64,000. Eight million, $64,700. These, this.
I didn't check the math. I assumed you got a formula that you ran. Question is, Mike.
There's a hidden, hidden row, but it, it.
Well, it says total, six and nine, it's got to be around 10 million. It can't be 8 million. Got to be around 10 million. So it could be a typo on the, in the formula or something there.
No, there's, there's a hidden row, and I bet you it.
Hidden row?
Row. Row in the spreadsheet. Yeah, no, no hidden row yet.
Well, the total of the wastewater total of 3125, let's see, there's 2349. That don't equal 3,125. I think it's a little less than that. So it looks like we have a math error in the formula.
You're, yeah, you're well north of 8,000.
Yeah, we got a math error somewhere in the formula here.
You're, you're 10 million over 10.
Yeah, over 10.
Right, now what?
Gives me cause. As far as this capital improvement plan, are you wanting this okayed, or are you wanting to look at it and come back to us at the next meeting to let us know how, if this is adequate?
Yeah, but you're doing that at the public meeting. You don't want to do that. You got to do that now, to make the changes.
I don't have any fundamental issue with it. All those needs that are in there are identified, whether we can accomplish it or not. But to me, I'm favorable to it because it just helps push that connection fee up.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, it's just a capital plan. So next year, it'll be, that's when the reality of it'll hit.
Yeah, the 2019 column is going to be really what's getting approved. So that's the.
Good point.
Most important column, and there really isn't any of the. ...good column, and there really isn't any of those big projects in there. So, if everyone's comfortable with the way that is, then we can incorporate this with staff's and board's approval into the package that gets presented at the public hearing.
What's the, what was the 2019 cost?
The math is total, is correct. It's 10,236, not 8,880.
Total cost or?
Total. The far right-hand column, the total, that black line...
What's the 2019 column?
The 2019 cost. Hold on.
Is it, are the green numbers accurate?
They appear to be.
Okay, all right. I can do that. Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Do I have a question?
You have a question, go ahead. Ask it now.
1,000,150.
Okay, we're only approving this capital improvement plan for the...
2019.
2019, right?
Yes. Is that correct?
And it's 1.15.
Yeah, and the budget, that's really the key piece to it.
So, all these others could change next year?
Oh, absolutely.
Probably will, especially if you get an SRF loan, because then you could go back and replace all the capital costs with the N I.
And when you look at, you know, in terms of dealing with the utility and anything, you want to have a two-to-five plan, just put everything on there and throw all the other moving pieces, connection fees, loans and stuff. So, that, you know, having those dollar amounts, that really does not impact anything in terms of your 19 budget. What it does is it provides staff and everyone else the opportunity to start planning for those projects, looking at the funding sources, looking at the dollar amounts, looking at staffing related to it. But really, 2019 is kind of your narrowing it down for the...
And these, all these other ones could change. They could be...
Timing of it will change, the dollar amounts will change.
Yeah.
The name of it will change.
Mike, you've got one deal that if we are gonna go with this, we need to change. Under the office building expansion, and I think this must be a typo, keypad entry security system, front gate, I think that won't fly a public hearing for $385,000.
That's the gate operator for 14%.
It's in the wrong...
It's in the wrong line item.
That's Lyra, Ed.
Lyra, yes, Lyra. pesos.
It's Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes, we have to correct the 7, the refurbish under irrigation, that's that line, the second line, from 36,300 to 46,20.
To the 730 allocation.
That has to be changed because that's the 70%. Thank you.
So, that's the 70-30 split? Okay.
Okay, so the capital improvement plan enterprise fund, do I have a motion to accept this?
I'll make that motion.
Accept it for purposes of the public hearing.
For the public hearing, yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
And a second? I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No. Yeah, we'll, once we get to beat on this again next year.
I guarantee it.
So, that brings us to supervisor comments, I believe.
Do you want to ask a quick question?
Very quick.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Could somebody give me the final net that you all came to of what this increase percent ends up being for assessments? I know you went through it very quickly and I...
8431 was last I wrote down.
No, I had 8627.
So, what...
Can he get that to you when he gets the calculation?
That would be great. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
But where we were at in the paper is 11491.
Right.
And we're talking about going to the public meeting already with taking it to 8627.
Right.
Okay.
So, supervisor comments? Done? You've done all your comments, Mr. Guy?
Go ahead, man.
Mr. Banks?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Tinkelman?
Just one. Let's get the logistics of this meeting because this, this is gonna be a mess. We're going to start at 2 here, but then at 3, we're going to go over to the church.
I thought we were starting the meeting here.
And you're gonna move...
And at 5 o'clock, we're going over to the church.
Because 5:30 is the budget hearing and public hearing on the budget.
But it's going to be at the church because the legal advertisement shows it being here.
The public announcement said it would be here.
I know it, that's my problem.
Okay.
And we can't, we can't move 300 people around.
Then we'll have it here.
You can't do that. We're gonna have 300 or 400 people here.
Oh, we've never had 300 or 400 people in 300 or 400 years.
And what was our plan?
Well, that was the plan, and, you know, and I think what it was is you were saying if you got an overflow crowd, you would just move it over to the church. It would accommodate, and my only concern was, you know, the people drive here, and then all of a sudden, you're saying, well, hop in your car and I'll drive over there.
I'd rather just have our meeting, have our 2 o'clock meeting here, and then we just go straight to the church and have our regular meeting wherever the church is. Which church do we have?
Trinity.
Your church.
Why can't we get the church across the street? Probably wouldn't let us have it.
Mr. Kenny?
I guess the question is, again, the advertisement is for here, and the thought was that depending upon at 5 o'clock, how many people we indicate would be here, we could recess, advise that the meeting is being located to a larger facility based upon whoever would show up here, and then we would post this place appropriately and then have the meeting continue, recessed until 5:30.